All right, it's eight thirty. We'll call the minute order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Item number three is an invitation for a citizen to schedule time on the commission agenda for an item not listed. Do we have any citizens? Paris, not. We'll move on to item four, which is an approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion been made in second. And any changes to the agenda?
No, I don't have any changes.
Saying none. Will all those in favor of the agenda say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Agenda stands approved. Item five is consent agenda items. We have approval of the minutes, approval of travel requests, approval of personnel action notices, and approval of human services reports. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion been made in second. Any comments on any of the reports?
I did hand out an updated human services report this morning. It is on your desks in front of you. The only change was, I think they'd left off a couple of the wording for approved, the approval wording, so this clarified that.
Okay.
There were no additional actual reference numbers, but it was just the approval-denial information.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll call a roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Boersma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item six is routine business, approval of the claims. Is there a motion to approve?
To move.
Second.
Motion been made in seconded. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Boersma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B is department head reports. We will start with Brian after he's ready to go.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, July thirty-one and August first, we closed down Brookings County Road Six to complete a culvert. Between County Road Seven and County Road Nine, that had been laying in the ditch for a while, growing roots in it. We did end up getting that patch back up last week, the thirteenth, fourteenth, and there was temporary closures there. August first, we submitted the PE grants with DOT according to our changes that we made in the five-year plan. The fifth and sixth, we closed County Road Seventy-seven down to repair a culvert also, and we patched that back up last week again. And August seventh, we had a pre-construction meeting for a box culvert south of Sinai, and we started construction here on Monday, and hopefully we'll be finished up by the end of next week, sooner if the weather allows. I guess we've gotten all this lovely rain, but we're moving right along on that. August twelfth, was informed by the DOT that Pram Construction got back to work on the bridges south on Seventy-seven, and then as you guys with our road tour looked at yesterday, that their construction has ceased as of the rain we got this weekend. I was hoping they could keep going, but water came back over their coffer dams, and thus allows them not to work. August thirteenth, met with Stacy and Larry in regards to our second release of the township funding request, which will be coming up here later in the meeting. August fourteenth, Deer Creek Station Bridge, I was informed by Banner that the grout had failed. I mentioned that to you guys yesterday. Still waiting to hear back on when we're gonna have a meeting in regards to that, to try to expedite that process of removal and repair of that grout. And the fifteenth, I met with DOT officials from here on and the contractor Prairie States out of Sioux Falls for the regrade on Highway Eighty-One. They're going to be using Brookings County Road Twelve and Eleven when hauling material for the project, but only empty trucks will be permitted to use that road. They'll be coming from fourteen to Eighty-One and dump their load on the project, and then they'll be using our route to return to Highway Fourteen. I guess, is there any questions on that? I did sign a haul road agreement last week with them in regards to that. The DOT monitors that also to, if there is any damage, they'll be repaired.
I assume.
Go ahead.
I assume when they regrout the bridge, there'll be another twenty-eight day waiting period then?
Yeah. Unless there are seven or fourteen day breaks, return as, you know, anticipated, that'll be at the forty-five-hundred PSI strength. So as soon as that criteria is met, they can go back in and place the guardrail in the asphalt.
Any other questions for? Hearing none. Brian, thank you very much.
Yep.
Marty, the sheriff's report?
Morning.
Morning.
Have forty in jail. I have two that's out of the facility. One's still in Falkton, and I have one in at the Yankton Hospital. Twenty-four-seven continues to stay busy. And if you have any questions, I guess it's, like I said, I give you a lot of information if you have any questions about any of it. I'll sure answer them. The only other thing is that Bart Siewie and myself attended the mental health summit last week, and so did Dan, and I don't know, maybe Dan will have more to report than I will. I didn't come out of that with a lot of knowledge I didn't already know, if that makes sense, is that talked a lot about the gaps and things of services found out that probably Brookings sits a little better than some agencies and other areas have more mental health facility to go to and so forth. So Vera did talk to us after one of the sessions, and they plan to come down here in the next couple of weeks, and then we can talk more about e-care and how that's gonna work for Brookings, South Dakota, for Brookings County. So other than that, I really didn't come away with a lot of, a lot of information on how the mechanics of the e-care will work. So if you guys have any questions. We're continuing to stay busy. Elkton School started yesterday. Rest of the schools will start this coming week, so. But Elkton started yesterday, so.
Thank you. Any questions for Marty? Thank you, Marty. We'll move to the Brookings County Outdoor Adventure Center. Kristen, your report.
Good morning. How is everyone? So I know it's been a couple of weeks, so I'll kind of give you a rundown on some of the stuff that we've been doing. At first, maybe an up-down update on some of the facility stuff. We have had Train back out, and the gentleman who took over is our new account manager, is just fantastic. He has a lot of engineering and design abilities, and so that enabled him to really look at everything that's going on with the system, how it was built, and then able to kind of look at how we can redesign a couple of the units and make that more efficient. In the process, we did have a switch go out in our outdoor unit, and it did take a couple of days to find the part and then get that put back in. Wasn't an expensive part, just something that goes out in an outdoor unit. We did have a lift station warning come on, and I think Stacy can give just a brief update more than I can on that.
It was after, I was a couple, three weeks ago maybe now, two, three weeks ago on a Monday, we get a call about the lift station. I think the utilities monitors, that has a monitor on that, informed us that the lift station on the east side of the Outdoor Adventure Center had gone out. So we got an electrician and plumber there to take a look at it. It was a pretty simple fix. There's actually an electrical box down inside the lift station, and a wire nut had fallen off, I think just because of the amount of rain that comes off, not just from, not just the sewer part, but there was, there's some runoff issues from the roof where it's draining right directly into this, this pit basically on that east side, that we think it just over time, the wire nut had fallen off, and once that got put back on, it started functioning again. Pretty easy fix overall. It just took a little time and to figure out exactly what was going on with it, but I think some simple fixes were to maybe get some eve spouts to push some of that water away from going directly into that basin, into that basin on the east side of the building. So, yeah, with Kristen, she was, she was out, so I went out there and was there until they got it working again. So no damage, nothing in the building, no water backup, nothing, nothing at all there, so.
I did, I did talk to representative from utilities, and having that electrical box with inside the lift station, I guess was not an ideal situation because of the moisture and the gases that he figured that the wires had corroded. They actually have a person from Minnesota that does the city's wiring on those lift stations, and he suggested that sometime we should have him look at that and redo it, so it'd be a little better, so.
So something to keep in mind for future improvement projects on the building. Other than that, we do have an archery event coming up September fifteenth, which is before archery season starts. So we're gonna open it up. We have vendors coming in, a few things like that, just to get people kind of excited for both seasons. The pistol rifle committee did give us a kind of maintenance list, and then things they'd like to see going forward into 2021, so we'll have a better idea of, you know, some of the asks that they have. And then we have chosen a lead mining company, and actually, we went with Action Target, who is the same company who built our range, so they have our plans. They know exactly how much rubber to add. They will be putting that in as well in one entire package for us, so, and they can coordinate our dates of the parking lot, which I know is on the agenda later. So just ended up working out as a great package. And then the last thing I have is something that I know LeAnn asked for a couple of months ago, and she had asked about walk-in traffic during the day. And so since July eighth, we've kind of been tracking it a little bit more specifically. And because of events, we've had staff there, ten AM to five PM, and then when we're open, the public range, gun range hours, we're there five to nine. And we've let people have archery day passes just because somebody is there, we can watch cameras, et cetera. So on an average, we have been selling no ads, nothing. This is just walk-in, general people, eight day passes per week since we've been doing that in about six weeks. But we've had average of eleven people per day just come in, get information, tours, who've never been there before, directed them to the four-H office, directed them to game fish in parks if neither one of them were there, you know, directed them to SDSU. I've had fish come in that needed to be weighed. You know, I have seen a twenty-five-pound catfish in a tote with ice on it, you know, I mean, but directed people to the right areas, kind of strengthening that GFP partnership there too. But we're seeing probably eleven people a day. I would say it's, you know, ten, but the numbers worked out to eleven people per day, and that's having somebody staffed from ten AM to nine PM on the days we're open, but ten AM to five PM, somebody besides myself being there. So those figures that you would ask for.
So the eleven is between ten and five?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
So any other questions for me? That kind of catches you guys up. Fall classes are already starting to fill up, and we've kind of got that situation under control. We have the ad going already in the fall/winter advertising for the city, and so we've already got things lined up, and now it's just filling everything.
Any other questions? Thank you much. Next, we'll go to the Veterans Services County Assistance Officer, Mike.
I don't have a lot. One of my veterans talked about coming in this morning, so that's the main reason I came up here. But as far as the office goes, it's going pretty well. It seems like we've pretty much spent most of our utility allowance. The rent seemed to be picking up. We're still having a steady supply of people coming in, two or three appointments a day. A lot of them dealing with rent. I will be attending the Salvation Army. I missed the last couple of months of that, but the Salvation Army meeting to try and find out how they're doing, because it seems like, you know, if, that they may be able to help pick up some more on that.
Any questions for Mike? If not, thank you, Mike. And we'll go to the weed board, Misty.
Good morning.
Morning.
I just have a few things. First of all, I'll start out with DOT, the first run is finished. It was finished about a month ago, is one, a month and a half. Now we've kind of just waited for farmers to hay the ditches, all that kind of stuff. Total cost for spraying for the first run for DOT was sixteen thousand, six hundred and forty-nine dollars and eighty-five cents. That's up a bit, but keep in mind, we used the Grassland L on DOT, so that cost raised it. We should be, we should be pretty good for a second run. I have the guys out starting on I-29 with the ATVs to get where the trucks don't reach. So we're starting the DOT today. I think all in all, the Grassland L is working. It's just, we are a little more cautious with the Grassland L. We're always cautious, but a little more cautious with that. Hopefully, we won't have as many weeds next year across our fingers. It took us a little longer this year because of the weather. I know I've reported that before to all you guys. I'm hoping we have a good fall. Maybe the rain will quit. I think Brian can also agree with me that the rain needs to quit. Townships, first run is done. We're starting on the second run. I have guys going every which direction. So we're starting on our second run for townships. The other thing is, Nick and Brock, my two ATV drivers, they are done Friday. They start school, and they're done Friday. Brock Swartos is willing to come back and work for four hours, couple, three days a week. I'm not sure his exact schedule yet, but I'm willing to take whatever help we can get. Because we lost Mitch Lang to highway full-time, so we're down to Gary Eggerberg, Mike Endresen, and myself now. So if you don't see me in my office, you know where I'm at. Call me. But otherwise, we'll see what Brock's schedule, how it plays out. Hopefully, it'll work out for us, in, you know, for us. The last thing I have, this is a ways out, but I just got notice. We have our District One meeting, which two people have to go to the district meeting and the conference in February to get our grant from the Weed and Pest Commission. We are hosting the District One meeting at the BCOAC November sixth. I know it's early, but I want to, I'm inviting you guys. I would appreciate it if a couple of you could come. It's nice to see commissioners there, if we can, if we can have you come. And the only thing I really need to do is line up the catering. The state pays for everything. I just need to line everything up. But otherwise, that is all I have unless you've got questions for me.
Any questions? Apparently none. Thank you very much, Misty. Next, we'll go to County Development, Bob Hill.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I sent your reports. I'm not gonna read through everything. The meetings at the elected officials, emergency management meetings have been going well. They've been well-received. Sometimes, or only the city council, and other times, it's like Sinai, when the whole room was full of people. And so it's good. We're getting good response from that. And we had our LEPC meeting on August the fifteenth, and I want to thank the B- Brookings County Outdoor Adventure Center for letting us use their meeting room. That went well. August sixteenth, we had an iPOS test. You guys paid the claim on iPOS today, and we went on the computer and we did our monthly test. It requires a monthly test, and we went in and did it. What that does, it allows us to ensure that if needed, iPOS will work. And so what we do is we start the local test locally. It goes to Washington DC, the big iPOS center. They review it, make sure it all matches what they say we can do, and then they push a message back to us saying it was a successful test or not successful. And that one was successful. We'll keep doing that once a month. We're gonna keep a log and keep doing those tests once a month.
Can I ask a question on that before we move on?
Yes, your ma'am.
So Bob, when we had the tornado warning on Saturday?
Yes, ma'am.
That didn't come across on iPOS. Is there, is that not the type of thing? Am I misunderstanding how we use that?
The only way that would come across is if I inputted it into iPOS.
Okay.
That would not come out automatically. There was, there was a wee, an emergency message sent out during that tornado warning, and I'll talk about that here in a minute.
Okay.
If you want.
Thank you.
Except for from iPOS, but we can talk about tornado messages and when we send them and when we don't.
Will we not be using iPOS for tornado warnings?
In certain instances, we would. The type of storm that we had Saturday night is not. It's not one of those when, number one, it was radar indicated only. There was no tornado that we know of, and we've checked, we found no damage in Brookings County. So if, if we know there's a tornado in the ground causing damage, then yes, iPOS, that's what you use iPOS for to go after. We did sound the alarms in Aurora, Bushnell, and Elkton based off radar rotation, and that's, that's all it was based off of.
Thank you.
So. Another thing we could use iPOS for is that they had that truck accident up on Hamlin County Line into Brookings County. That would have been an instance where iPOS possibly could have been used. We could have drew the box within whatever, whatever parameters that the state of South Dakota wanted for the emergency message, but we elected, called the individuals. They had the livestock out, because not everyone within the boundary that we would have drew has livestock on the Big Sioux River. So there's, iPOS is a very, very tricky thing. If you do it wrong, then you ruin it forever, and people would lose confidence. And it's gotta be, gotta be something that we maintain strict control over, in my opinion. And so we're monitoring it. We're on top of it. We realize it's not a cheap tool, and we want to use it properly. You know, we, speaking of the iPOS thing, there's people on the, on Facebook, social media saying, well, I got my warning on my phone seven minutes before the sirens went off. Well, the way the message came out, it came from the National Weather Service. But people don't realize, I don't listen to KSFY, I don't listen to Kelo, I don't listen to whatever news you listen to on, on the radio or TV. I concentrate on the National Weather Service. It's a federal organization that whether, that deals with weather, and that's, they're the ones that pushes out the warnings. When they put out the warning, they gave us like a ten-minute warning before it would hit Aurora, and then a twenty-minute warning before it would hit Elkton. So that's when we had the sirens set off within, in proper times, so. It's a, it's gonna be a no-win situation for, for an emergency manager. We're just gonna do the best we can, and in both cases, tornadoes did not hit either town. But we're always gonna err on the side of safety and go from there. If I would have sent an iPOS message, I just feel it would, I just wasn't getting the indication that the, that the, you know, that there was a tornado. So we, there's one thing, sending out a message on the radio, and Dallas Cole was on the, on the phone with me on nine-one-oh and fourteen-thirty and all that. So we was on the air, and we also, we was also getting calls. I was more worried about the eastern side of the county, and then I'm getting a call to open a shelter downstairs and let people into the basement, which is fine. We, I went down, but I had to lose my tracking capabilities over on the east side of the county when I went downstairs.
So we did open the shelter?
We did open the shelter, and we had three individuals.
And I, and I just want to say, my concern is, I had been at Lake Campbell that day. I knew there were people camping out there that weren't listening to the radio, and they weren't listening to television, and I called them and said, there are tornado warnings. But iPOS, my understanding is that that's one of the reasons we decided to invest in that, is so our citizens that maybe aren't hearing the sirens, because they're not anywhere close to sirens, would be getting notification on their phone, because most people have their phone plastered their hip, so.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, Lake Campbell never would have got a, got a, got anything on Saturday night.
Right.
The warnings were all eastern South Dakota.
Right.
It never came even, as far as I know, Sinai and Campbell wasn't involved in the thing. It actually passed by both of them, just about where the interstate was, is where the break was, then it headed north. Ward is, Ward was the central point from what I could determine from, from the weather.
I understand that, but when they're saying that nine miles south of Brookings, there's a funnel, okay, that's Lake Campbell area, so how would people know when you're saying nine miles, and that's what was on Kelo, was nine miles south of?
And once again, I don't, I don't monitor KD, DLT. The National Weather Service was telling me nine miles south of Aurora, which is, it's, I'm not, I agree with you.
No, no, I understand. I just want to be sure we've got in play the system that we're spending the money for, for notifying our citizens when, when there's a dangerous situation.
And I feel we do, but.
Great.
One thing, they, the National Weather Service, they put out these warnings on us, especially this tornado warnings, and the severe thunderstorm warnings, they, they break the county down. Either it's the western half, the southern half, northern half, eastern half. So we get pretty detailed. What happens when you look at media such as TV and radio, they say, well, Brookings County is involved in a severe tornado warning. But true, Brookings County is in a, but we don't set the sirens off in Brookings for a tornado warning that's only affecting the city of Elkton. And that's, that's where the confusion comes in, in my opinion, but we'll, we'll keep plugging away at it, and we've got no problem monitoring and setting off what we can. We just, we, yeah, we'll, we'll leave it at that. The briefing in Volga on August nineteenth, I had my deputy, Richard Hoggan, came with me out there so he could see how I do it, because this is a state and local agreement requirement yearly, and if I'm not available to go to a local community to give a local emergency manager briefing, it's my job for him to step in and do the briefing for me. So I took him to Volga with me and showed him how I do. Also, yesterday on Monday, Friday, we had gotten a call from Office of Emergency Management that FEMA was giving a briefing on inputting the paperwork, and that briefing was down at the big FEMA Regional Center in Sioux Falls at the old Sears store, and they wanted a representative from our office down there to get some training. So I, I made the decision to send Ray Lynn down there and do the FEMA training. We'll turn a late travel request in at the next county commission meeting to cover that travel. But I couldn't break loose, me and Richard, because we was already scheduled for the Volga briefing. So we, the work, the office is working good. We just had to close the office over lunch, and two of us in Volga, one of us in Sioux Falls. And there is a flood warning issued right now for the Big Sioux River North of Bruce, and that- And that tells me that, it says Big Sioux River at Esteline, but it does include the northern part of Brookings County down to Bruce, which tells me that now that Esteline's flooding, it's going to come down, and the next Bruce River flood, then the Big Sioux River flood down where the Nite 77 bridges are trying to be worked on, that water's going to keep coming up. They was talking about the rain lessening up. From what I heard, it's just going to be a wet fall, so. For our information.
We do have a 9 o'clock scheduled. Do you have a lot left?
Oh.
Yes, no?
September 13th, we're going to have Preparedness Day, and we're going to have an open house for the storm shelter downstairs, and that's it.
Okay. Any other questions for Bob?
When is the open house on the storm shelter?
September 13th.
13th.
Thank you.
It'll be a National Preparedness Day event for Brookings County.
All right. Thank you, Bob. We do have a 9 o'clock scheduled agenda item. Travis Krieger, a discussion on possible action to allow Mr. Krieger to do metal detecting on the courthouse grounds. I think we'll have the discussion first, so take it to you, Travis. Please come up and introduce yourself.
Hi, Travis Krieger. I've been doing the metal detecting since I've been about 12, I suppose. I've searched all over the states. So how it works is I look for a property that's basically undisturbed, like courthouse. I've hunted Madison, South Dakota courthouse there, Pipestone, Flandrew, Dual County courthouse. And I never thought about hunting the one in my home. I live in Brookings County. I have an acre chip by Lake Ponset. But anyhow, I got a metal detector, fairly high-end, isolate a signal. I cut a really small plug, pull it up, pull the item out, put it down. There's no trace, no sign. You can't tell I was there. Basically, everything's undisturbed.
Yeah. Anything else?
That's basically it.
Questions from the commissioners? Who wants to go first? Anybody?
I spoke with the groundskeeper, and he said that I had to, and usually I do it. Procedure to go before the board of commissioners to get, seek approval.
We appreciate that. The only other question I would have, you know, you've asked for permission. We appreciate that. But if others sue you out there doing metal detecting, will others just show up? Do you know, Marty, is there a problem or an issue with that? Have you ever seen anybody out there metal detecting, Marty, or your staff, or anybody?
What's that? If there are any value to them or anything, I'll let, you know. If they're unique to the county or whatever, a lot of times I'll donate them to a local museum. I just enjoy doing it as a hobby. I don't do it for the... Absolutely.
Yep. Any other questions?
I'm curious about depth for the overall, and then what do we do about utility locates in situations where we may have utilities?
Depth is usually five to seven inches is where the good stuff hides. So, and I can hear underground sprinklers. I can hear, I don't, I always isolate the object before I dig. And like I said, the hole is usually about this big around, and it's five to six inches deep. And so there's no chance of hitting a utility or anything.
Any other questions or comments?
I'm just curious, because you've done a number of courthouses, do you report back to us what you found, or?
If I find anything of value, yeah. Yep, yes, I do. And a lot of times the groundskeeper will keep an eye on me, just for the first little bit, you know, if there's any... Like Flandrew, they had the groundskeeper watch us for, I don't know, the first 10 minutes. I was hunting with another gentleman over there who approached the courthouse at the exact same time I did. We hadn't met each other, but.
What type of things are you normally finding in courthouses?
Indian head pennies, an old token once in a while, usually dating about the courthouse. I've got, yeah, just old Indian head pennies. They come out of the ground looking like this.
All right. Any further questions? Appears we would need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Please let us know if you find anything interesting.
Will do. Thank you.
Or report it to either Stacy or Marty.
Okay.
All right. Save our best for last, Vicki. All the money. Treasurer's report. Finance office.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just to give you an update on our office, legislative audit from Pier, it came last week. So they're just starting the process. We just have one auditor here. So it'll probably be a time-consuming process. I think there'll be a couple more coming eventually, but they're just doing the start of the 2018 audit. Last week, we had three from our office attend the Oacoma Sodasis. It's a software users group meeting, and they got good information from that. And tomorrow, there is an eight or 10-county meeting in Dual County, so Kristen and I will be attending that. And you should have received in your packet the finance officer's report for July. And just going through it, just with the revenue and the expenditures, we are just completely on target with July being 58.33% of the month completed. The revenues are at 55.95, which is down just a hair, and that's because of property tax second half isn't in. And then the expenses are at 55.97. So there really isn't any issues looking at judicial and behavioral health, which a lot of times we are over. We're not towards the end of the year yet, so that still could happen. But right now, we are just on target with everything, all the revenues and expenditures for general fund, Roden Bridge Fund, pretty much all the funds. We're over a little bit on 24/7, and we're watching that, and we know why. So we'll keep an eye on that. And also, the surplus analysis, we are down just a hair with 26.6. But we've done the third quarter transfers already, so that's probably why. It's pretty much on target for what it used to be back about three years ago. But the last couple of years, we've been higher than that, but nothing to be concerned about. We are in good shape there. And then we also have the be-it noted items, the auditors' account with the treasurer, the payroll and additives totals, the highway expenditure report, and the register of deed statement of fees collected for the month of July. So any questions on any of the report?
Any questions from the commission? None. Thank you, Vicki. Got a few minutes yet before our 9:15 scheduled item. We'll move on to regular business. Item 8A, action to approve resolution number 19-39, a plat of Block 1, Hesby addition in the north, one half of the northwest quarter section of Section 26 Township 110 North, range 51 West of the 5th Prime Meridian, Brookings County, South Dakota. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. We'll have a report from Bob.
Yeah, we heard all the enclosed plats at our August planning meeting, and they was approved by the planning commission with the recommendation that this board approves all of them.
Thank you, Bob. Any questions? The commissioners. Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Boersma?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B is an action to approve resolution number 19-40, a plat, Lot 49A of the first addition of Lake Ponset Heights subdivision in Lot 2, Section 5 Township 112 North, range 52 West of the 5th Prime Meridian, Brookings County, South Dakota. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Bob, a report?
Same thing. It was heard on the August planning meeting schedule, approved, and sent to this board with the recommendation that you approve it also.
Thank you. Any questions from the commissioners? Any questions? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Boersma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item C is an action to approve resolution number 19-41, a resolution placing mobile homes on the uncollectible list. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any comments? Any questions on the list, Vicki?
This is just a listing of the ones that came back as unlivable, or they were gone. A lot of them this year were underwater out on South Main, and there was one that was burnt down. So it's just the list of uncollectibles that we take off the tax rules, but we still have them available to put back on the tax rules in case there's ever any way we can collect for them. We have done that in the past. One time, we could put it back on and collect. But right now, they were basically not much to them. I went out to the sale this year with Scott and one of the deputies, and it was kind of an eye-opener, what some of these were like. Nobody lived in any of them, and they were just completely a disaster.
Any questions from the commission? Any comments? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Boersma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item D is an action to approve agreement number 19-53, A State of South Dakota Department of Public Safety, Office of Emergency Management, 2020 Local Emergency Management Performance Grant Subrecipient Agreement. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Bob, a report?
Yes, I put a quick staff report in you guys' folder earlier. It basically, it's the same type of document that we get yearly. We submitted it to the state's attorney's office. Counselor Nelson reviewed it. I had Finance Officer Bouciff, she filled out one of the documents in it to assist us. And one page had to be updated by the state of South Dakota. All that's been returned to us. You've got the complete document in front of it. And the biggest thing is that they changed the name from state and local agreement to local emergency management grant.
All right. Thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission? Questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Boersma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item E is an action to approve agreement 1954, an easement for use of County Road Right-of-Way made by KC Dairies LLP. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any report on this? Brian, any report?
This is just a follow-up from earlier this spring when we had a lot of the manure pipes around our right-of-way. We're just cleaning this up to ensure that that don't happen again.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Boersma?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We'll do that as voice vote. Next time, item F is an action to approve agreement number 1955, an easement for use of County Road Right-of-Way made by Kodiak Pork RE LLC. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion been made and seconded. Report?
This is a new permit. This is County Road 27 for that new hog barn, just south of Highway 14.
All right. Thank you. Any comments from the commission? Any comments?
You okay with that? You checked it out and everything, and you're good with it?
Yeah, yep. I review every site.
Okay. Any additional comments or questions? Not, we'll call the roll. Excuse me, this one we can do by voice vote, so let me go ahead. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G is an action to approve notice of award to Bose Construction for asphalt paving at Brookings County Outdoor Adventure Center North parking lots. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any questions? Any comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. It is 9:15. We will move into our 9:15 scheduled item.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to recuse myself on this item.
Noted. Item B, under our scheduled agenda items, 9:15, is a public hearing in action to approve resolution number 19-38, a resolution in order superseding the resolution of 19-16 and approving the vacation of the following described avenue. First Avenue East, located between lots 56, 57, 58, 63, 64, and 65, located in the plat entitled First Edition Lake Ponset Heights subdivision in Government Lot 2 of Section 5 Township 112, range 52, west of the 5th Prime Meridian, Brookings, South Dakota. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second? Got a second? Okay. Thank you. A report on this from anybody? Bob, is there a part on this, or?
We have to open, we have to have the public hearing.
Open and close the public hearing first, so. Anybody from the public like to address this resolution? Yep. Come on up and identify yourselves. The microphone is on.
Morning. Jesse Rottling Long with Shad Swedlin, who is one of the property owners. We were here before you a couple months ago. We got approved. It was sent to the registered deeds and was rejected. So as you can see, we inserted really just the first Avenue East located at between, and then the legal description, to more properly describe what exactly was being vacated. That was the concern of registered deeds. We have now since, you know, had the registered deeds approve it. We worked with the county's office, and I think we're, we should be in good shape, ready to have it recorded going forward. But yeah, we were before you a couple months ago as approved. We just had to make sure we described it a little bit better for the purposes of the registered deeds.
Okay. Any other comments? Anybody else has a public hearing? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and open it up for board comments. Any comments from the board?
Do we have any paperwork from Bev, this being?
No, I've been working with Bev, though, and we've got the changes to the resolution. She is now comfortable with this updated language.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Any other questions or comments? Thank you, guys, or excuse, but thank you. Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Jensen?
Aye.
Boersma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you. Let's move to item H, an action to approve agreement number 19-56, an agreement between Brookings County and Bose Construction for asphalt paving at the Brookings County Outdoor Adventure Center North parking lot. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any comments about this one? Any comments? Hearing none, we'll call the roll. We'll wait for just a moment. Commissioner Pierce comes back, I guess. Commissioner Pierce, you up to date on this particular action item?
I am.
All right. Thank you. Any comments from you? Hearing none, then we'll call the roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Boersma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item I is an action to approve the notice to proceed for Bose Construction for asphalt paving at the Brookings County Outdoor Adventure Center North parking lot. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any comments from the commission? Any comments from anybody? Kristen, do you need to make a comment? You may.
Okay, Stacy and I have just a clarification. So the date on there shows August, nothing, 2019. So do we have any kind of a clarification on the date of commencement?
Commencement or completion? Completion's October 15.
Right, but do you have a date they're going to start?
No.
Essentially, it's any time after today, right? I think it could be any time after today if there is a specific date.
You won't get that.
I mean, I think we probably need to figure out those, find out when they're going to be there so we can give notice. And if we have any projects or any events going on where, like, you can put cones out and say, "Okay, this is where you can park."
Right. So I think it could be today's date. That would be the soonest that they could start. And then if Kristen reaches out to Bose to see if we can't work out when.
At least some kind of a timeline. I mean, if we're going to have a huge member event, I don't want them to have nowhere to park or no way to get to the building, which is the big thing.
It's my guess they'd wait till softball season was over to start this, but.
Yeah, that's.
Softball season starts, and then like football and youth football starts. Softball season starts, and then like football and youth football starts.
And it goes straight in.
So I don't know that there's ever going to be a perfect time to do this, but we just need to move ahead.
So that was my question, is what date? I know the completion date, but if you guys had heard anything from Bose on roughly when they would like to do this project?
I stopped at city office last week and asked to sit in on the pre-construction meeting, and I'm sure at that time they will probably have a date they're presumably gonna start on it, so.
Perfect. Thanks, guys.
Do we want to insert a date?
Typical practice for notice to proceed is the date of action.
Okay. Would you, yeah, would you like to make an amendment to the motion to include today's date? Yeah, we should have it as an amendment. No, let's just do an amendment. We'll just clarify it. Just put in today's.
I'd move to amend the original motion to include today's date.
Alright, is there a second?
Second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second and a discussion on today's date. If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. No, the original motion has amended. Is there any comments? No comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Thank you. Motion passes. I'm never a fan of friendly amendments. They don't really exist, so we'll get to the regular amendments. Item J is a discussion and possible action to approve township culvert grant applications. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second? Anybody want a second?
Second.
Thank you. Have a motion and a second. We'll have a report or comments here. Any comments or questions on the culvert grant applications?
Included in your packet was information. I have the spreadsheet up, round two down at the bottom of that. You can see the requested amounts. There were two, again, from Preston Township. These were actually the same two projects that we had approved during the first round. However, the contractor had submitted an inaccurate quote for the price of the culverts, and then let them know that later. So without our additional dollars, it indicated that they may not be able to do the project. So it would be an additional one thousand four hundred and sixteen dollars per project in Preston Township. And then there were also requests from Sherman Township and Sterling Township. My understanding, and Brian can maybe get into this a little bit more, but the culverts, they don't meet that sixteen square foot requirement per statute.
Okay, any comments, Brian?
Like I said, I go out and review each of these, and I did measure those culverts. And the anticipated culverts that they had proposed to put in there, I wouldn't feel comfortable doing that, as it may affect the drainage downstream of those culverts, because they were gonna put in larger than what is there. And without a study being done, I don't feel comfortable with those. And then, like Stacy mentioned, they don't currently meet the sixteen square feet in the opening.
Any questions or comments? Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Boersma.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item K is an action to approve an appointment to the Brookings County Planning and Zoning Commission in District Four to fill an unexpired term. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. The application is from Tom Davis, who's been on the zoning board in the past. Do we have any other information, Bob or Stacy, on this request?
Mr. Davis has been an alternate since we first started the alternates. He's been performing an outstanding job as an alternate, so I have no issue with him being appointed a full-fledged member. He's replacing our former chairperson who passed away a month or so ago.
I just had one question. And Bob, I didn't look myself, but he meets the district requirements, right?
Yes, ma'am. He is in that, in that district. Lives in that district.
Thank you.
Are we looking at replacing the alternates then?
Yes, that'd be the next request to the county commission department head to find an alternate.
Any other comments?
Bob, will they, once Mr. Davis is on the board, will they reelect the chairman then, or will he take over as chairman?
No, the chairperson is Kimberly E. Lenkovich, and that's per our bylaws. Our bylaws state that the vice-chairperson automatically becomes the chairperson until the end of the term, which is December. And then, we did have an election for, and we voted in Chad Ford as our new vice-chairperson at the last meeting. All Mr. Davis is doing is becoming a board member.
Alright.
Any other questions or comments?
And this is, this actually fills an unexpired term through the end of this year, so you will be seeing this position re-advertized here in probably the next four to six weeks for all of the positions that are up for appointment January one.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. And we'll move on to item nine, the commission department director's report.
As Vicki had noted in her finance officer's report, we had to discuss the general fund surplus information. It is a little bit lower than it has been the last couple of years, but overall, just actually slightly above average for the eleven, nine, eleven years, whatever it's been that we've been tracking this. So I think we're just fine. The city is organizing their complete count committee for the census next year. Mayor Corbett had reached out to me, and in the past, it has been the chairperson that has been a part of that committee. But if you have that discussion and would like to appoint someone else to that committee, let me know, and I can get back in touch with Mayor Corbett so that whoever that is, he knows and can start including them on meeting minutes and notes and agendas and whatnot. Any thoughts?
Doesn't necessarily have to be the chair. Would anybody like to serve on that committee?
If you don't want to do it, Mike, I would do it.
Thank you.
But if you'd like to do it, that's, I don't wanna step on any toes.
You're welcome to sit on that committee. Without objection, I will appoint you to that committee. Thank you. Alright.
Alright, that was easy. In your, included with my packet were the proposed resolution and policy changes for the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners. Those will be reviewed as part of the caucus meetings that first night, Monday night, out at convention out in Pier in the middle of September, and then at the general, the general session at the last thing on Tuesday, those will be voted on. So you can take a chance to review those. I am guessing that tomorrow at our ten-county meeting, we will be hearing all about them. So if you have any other questions or concerns, you can discuss them kind of as that group tomorrow as well. But they are included for you to look at in, along with my report in the packet. You did receive information. The next county employee social is Sunday, September twenty-second. It's gonna be out at Goodroot's Farm and Gardens at five-thirty. That flyer is attached. Yesterday, we started our county tour and got about halfway done before time ran out. So I had mentioned yesterday, if you've had a chance to look at schedules to see when you would like to reschedule to do the second half of the tour. Does anything stand out? I don't know, you know, if there's something, Ryan, that doesn't work for you too, you'd be important to this process as well. Anything, any dates anybody wants to throw out? I know Commissioner Bartley is gone, correct? Do you leave for, you're out in DC for a?
Yeah, September ninth, tenth, and eleventh, I'm gone.
Okay. And then the next Monday, Tuesday, sixteenth, seventeenth, we're out in Pier. Joint jurisdiction is on the nineteenth.
Right. Thoughts on dates for anybody?
The fifth, the twelfth? Or do we wanna stick to? We have commission meetings the third, the twenty-fourth of September.
Those first two weeks of September are fine. Second week in September?
Afternoon of the third is open. Anybody? Anybody? I would have to, I'm not available that afternoon. But that doesn't necessarily matter either, if that works for everybody else. Twelfth?
Well, it's Halloween.
The twelfth?
Takes up a whole day.
What's that?
Twelfth, twelfth works for me.
Are you talking about the twelfth of?
Of September?
Well, actually, it probably doesn't work for me, since I just got back from DC. I'm gonna have appointments, I'm sure.
What about the fifth?
Works.
That afternoon? No. No? Angie, no?
Whoever don't mind Fridays? Do a morning one on a Friday?
The sixth or the thirteenth?
I can't on the sixth. I could on the thirteenth.
Okay. Neither am I.
Doodle pole.
Sounds like a doodle pole to figure it out. Only include the dates Brian can do it, and then we'll go from there.
If it's gotta be on Friday, I can do it Friday, too.
Super.
If we do a Friday, let's just do it in the morning.
Yeah, thirteenth. Friday the thirteenth.
Okay.
Works.
Thirteenth.
Yeah.
What time is the open house for the storm shelter?
Definitely goes from like ten o'clock to two o'clock.
So we could do, if you wanna meet out there, do you wanna start early? Start it, meet out there at eight-thirty?
Hold on. I won't be able to. I'm having a tough time with my computer here. All of a sudden, I hit that thing. I state convention for the Realtors are the week of the ninth through the thirteenth.
How about the sixth? Anybody?
Sixth is fine.
No. No. No, no? How about the eighteenth or the twentieth?
Eighteenth in the morning.
That will work? Yes?
Is it possible eighteenth in the afternoon, or no?
Let's just go ahead and do a doodle pole. It might work the best. Everybody okay with that? Alright, let's just do that, and then we'll figure it out from there. Okay?
Okay, and then some upcoming dates this afternoon. Once we finish up here, today is the Conservation District Tour. We're meeting at their office on Sixth Street. It's in the west part of the movie theater parking lot there. And try to be there by about eleven forty-five is our plan. Tomorrow, we do have Sioux Valley Commissioners Quarterly Meeting that starts at noon. It's at St. Paul's Lutheran Church in Clear Lake. I have RSVP'd for four of you, all of you, except for Commissioner Bartley, to attend that tomorrow.
I'm not attending that, Stacy. Tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
I can't.
You cannot?
No.
Okay.
That starts at what time?
Noon.
Noon.
Yep. Labor Day holiday, Monday, September second. Each of you, I handed out this morning as part of your, kind of your mail packet, there was an invitation for an open house and shareholder meeting out at Daktronics on Wednesday, September fourth. The open house is from five to seven with the shareholder meeting at seven. And then, as we've mentioned, the sixteenth and seventeenth of September, Fall Convention is that. And that's all I have unless you have any. I also did hand out a couple other things today, just, you've seen it before, it's been in the packet before, but the tour information for today, kind of the agenda. And then, it was included in your packet as well today, but I handed out a hard copy of the bridge map that Brian had provided, so.
Thank you. Item ten is the state's attorney's office report. Dan?
Yeah, just kind of following up where Marty left off. I also attended the summit for mental health in the criminal justice system. This was a summit that was brought by the UJS, and so they kind of invited a lot of the stakeholders to, involving the specific counties. And so I'm not sure how much the commission knows about, Brookings County is going to pilot what has been termed telehealth. This is a system that Avera is using, and so what it comprises of is going to be a iPad that the deputy sheriffs will be given. And if they encounter a situation where they respond to a scene, and there's a suspect or person that they come in contact with that is dealing with a mental health issue, and so the deputies have been trained with the crisis response, and so they're able to, you know, determine whether or not this is a mental health issue. What they can do then is fire up that iPad, and then that will go down to a mental health provider down in Sioux Falls at Avera Behavioral. And then that person who's dealing with the mental health crisis will be able to interact via iPad with a mental health provider. And then that mental health provider will be able to assist in what the proper course is in terms of treatment, what the seriousness is of the issue. And so they want to basically expedite the mental health treatment on scene. And so there will be an on-scene aspect of the telehealth, but then also there'll be telehealth services available at the jail. And so they're hoping to roll this out this fall. Is that correct, Marty? Yeah, so this fall, probably October, I think, is what I heard, is when the iPads will arrive. There'll be a training, and then hopefully we'll be able to implement that. Whether or not the police department, university PD is on board with that, I think remains to be seen. And so that was one aspect of the summit. The other aspect was something that we may start doing here in Brookings County, that Cottignan County is currently doing. And so Judge McCann up there has developed a questionnaire that if there's someone who's arrested where there's a mental health issue that's been determined, they'll go through a list of questions, and then depending on what the answers are to that question, they'll tally that up. And they'll let the judge know what the result is on that questionnaire. And then it's just only available to the judge and the defense attorney. But that's filed with their court case, and then the judge will know at the bond hearing and kind of as the case proceeds whether or not this person had a mental health issue at the time of arrest. So we may implement that here in Brookings County if there's individuals that have been arrested where there's a mental health issue. So we talked a little bit about that. One thing that may be affected by this telehealth is, so Minnehaha County, when they implemented this telehealth, they saw their numbers of involuntary committals go down. And so the situation here is if we have a, an arrest where that person's in custody, Avera Behavioral Health in Sioux Falls will not take that person. So that person's going to HSC. If it's a non-custodial placement and it's just in civil involuntary committal, that person is then eligible to go to Avera Behavioral Health. Well, what Minnehaha County is telling us is that once this telehealth is implemented, that the number of involuntary committals that are occurring actually goes down. And so the person who would have otherwise been committed to Avera or HSC is actually staying here in the community because they feel that resources and treatment outside of the involuntary process is actually available. And so that would be a cost savings to the sheriff's office, to the county, in terms of not having to transport as many involuntary committals. not having to transport as many involuntary committals through the telehealth process, whether that occurs at the jail or whether that occurs on scene with the iPad. Our involuntary committal numbers may go down as part of that. So that's encouraging. Minnehaha County has seen, I don't want to throw a figure out there because I don't know if that's representative of what we'll have here in Brookings County. I don't want to put out information that may not be consistent to what we see here, but it was a big number of the drop of involuntary committals because of the telehealth. So exciting stuff. I, we'll see how it goes here in the next year, but Brookings County, Falk County, and I think Mead County are some of the pilot counties here. So just an update on kind of what we learned and some of the things that we're looking forward to here on the mental health side of things, so. Any questions on that?
Just a comment, and it'll be interesting to see how all that works out. But part of the tension that we've always had in Brookings County between East Central and the hospital is the fact that, and we'll see how it works with the tele system, is that the physician or the staff out there would want a commitment where the mental health person would not want a commitment. And what would be interesting to see if their involuntary commitments have decreased, have any suicide attempts or actual suicides have their numbers increased? Because that's where that synergy is between those two things, and it'd be nice to know if that's made any difference there.
Question I would have from Marty is, do you have facilities for the telehealth in the jail at this point? Is that, I mean, equipment's going to be provided, or do we have a room and facilities for that? Okay, good. Will there be a funding request to the county for any of this? Okay, thank you. Anything else, Dan?
No.
Thank you. We'll move on to commissioner reports and discussing items. We do have some correspondence. We received the ENR to Norfield, I believe that's on a, can't remember what it says, is that for Madera Management Plan or something, something like that. And then a thank you from the Uncle Sam Jam people. And so we'll start commissioner reports with Commissioner Pierce.
And maybe I'll start with a question I had for Stacy. So you were talking about the city complete count committee for the census. Where are we at on the county committee? Have we?
There's only going to be one committee, and that, this is going to be, at least this is what we did in 2010. It's based off of the, because the city on their complete count committee will be Beta and all the other participants. If we try to have our, a county complete count committee, all we're doing is duplicating what the city does, and we won't get the participation that the city's got. But we can bring in, we can use the complete count committee to reach out to the whole county. And that's, that's what we did in 2010.
And so the city of Brookings Complete Count Committee will also deal with the rural areas and the small towns in the county?
That's right. That's why I, I'll be on it. Obviously, you will be on it.
And then for my report, on August 6th, I attended Teshir's 100-year anniversary reception at Innovation Campus, which was, was interesting, and there was a very nice turnout for that. Attended the reception, or the luncheon, I should say, that John Thune was at on August 13th. And he did talk about the 20th Street Overpass. Hopefully, we're going to be getting some support from him. We'll see how that turns out. On August 13th, I attended the downtown Brookings event, looking at future, again, activity in the downtown area. On, on August 15th, we had a joint powers meeting. I don't know if you had a chance to look out at the parking lot when you came to the meeting today, but the work is almost completed, if it's not completed. I believe that what they said is in the next two weeks, we're going to have the concrete or the, the cup, are we doing concrete or asphalt? I just forgot. But whatever that is, we're going to have.
Concrete.
Yep. We talked about the bio-swell, and if you recall, our bid came in about $86,000 under for the parking lot, and the city wants to use some of that money to do a bio-swell at, on that drainage ditch that's on the west side. And we'd had some conversation before. They came back this time. They had drawings. And would like to make that kind of an educational drainage ditch so that they could be showing developers how to, how to handle some of these issues as they arise in, in other developments in Brookings. And we might have shown a little, the county representatives might have shown a little sticker shock at our last meeting. This time, they came back and suggested maybe they would pay for 75% and we would pay for 25%. And they're thinking the cost will be around $30,000. And we did vote for that, those of us that are on, on the committee. The city has hired a consultant to look at all of their facilities in the city of Brookings. And then they're going to come up with a long-term maintenance plan. One of the facilities that they'll be looking at is this facility. And we did ask them if, if there was a possibility of having to reach out and having that consultant look at the county side of the building, since they're going to be here anyway, to get any suggestions, and I don't know if anything happened with that, Stacy.
I've been, Matt Bartley reached out to me yesterday, and we were gone for the tour, and today I'm out. So I've, I've been in contact with them. He and I just need to schedule a time to touch base.
So then we'll, they'll be coming back and telling us what things that this consultant said that this building might need. I think they're looking at a 10-year period.
Yep.
And then the other thing that happened at Joint Powers is we're moving forward with the art in the hallway, and it's, you probably can say this better than me, Stacy. It's going to be on that wall that's.
First floor. North entrance, west wall.
And we're moving forward with that.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of the west end of the city, city development, city engineering that comes right by those couple steps that step up out in front of the finance office. Yeah, and by the ramp, so.
And they're looking at doing some type of unit to attach to the wall that'll be similar to what's out at Innovation Campus, so that when things are hung, it doesn't deface the wall. And then yesterday, I was on the bridge and highway tour with all of you, and I wanted to thank you, Brian. That was very interesting. I learned a lot. That'd be my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Boersma?
Tuesday, August 6th, I went out to the highway shop to meet with Brian, and we talked through two kind of major items. One was the EJCDC contracts for highway projects, and then kind of walked around the facilities and took a look at buildings and just wanted to see the condition of repair and things that may need attention in the next couple of years. And then that evening, went to National Night Out, and the sheriff's department and others were there. It was a great evening, really well-attended. So thanks for that, Marty, and the deputies did a great job. They put Kevlar on me and the whole nine yards, so it was a very weird and surreal kind of experience, but it was a good, it was a good night. And then August 18th, met with Dan to go over contracts on the jail expansion stuff. And then yesterday, highway and bridge tour. Last night then was the East Central Behavioral Health Board meeting, and just wanted to make sure that everybody understands that there will be an invitation coming to the board for an open house and kind of a grand reopening for them on Friday, September 6th, as a part of their rebranding and, and sort of relaunch of that whole facility. So that would be it.
Do you know what time that'll be?
I think they were talking about doing tours for a good chunk of the afternoon, like a 2 o'clock to 6 o'clock time period, and then a program around 5-ish potentially, so. Should be a good time.
Will they be announcing their, their rebranding effort at that time?
The rebranding is supposed to actually roll out the week prior, I think. And so most of that stuff, the new website, kind of new naming, logo, all that will come out. I believe this next week, actually, and then going into the open house afterwards.
Anything else? Commissioner Cogman?
August 13th, had lunch with legislature, which was Senator Thune. And then August 19th, we just had our county highway tour, which again was always, is always a good tour to see, get out there and see everything, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Jensen?
On the 13th, met with Stacy and Brian on township culvert grant applications. Attended the Thune dinner, and yesterday, we're on the tour with the county highway tour.
Thank you. On the 6th, we had the planning and zoning meeting. Things that we took action on this evening were passed there and approved. On the 8th, the PPCC POD meeting, party dispensing meeting out at the BCOEC, and thank you, Kristen, for hosting us out there. That went well, and there's a lot of things going on, on that, that you'll hear of in the next month or two as we do those exercises. On the 12th, met with Senator Thune at a meeting with about five or six of us with him before the luncheon. And then the luncheon was good to be able to hear some of his comments about things that are getting done out in Washington DC that we don't see or hear about, so. We got an update on some of those, both at, at the small meeting and then at the larger luncheon meeting. On the 14th was the lead-around table. We attended that. Both Leanne and I were there for that meeting. Good conversation centered around the city's budget, and a presentation by Paul Brusino on that. Looks like they've laid it out fairly well for us to understand it. And the 15th was a joint powers board meeting, and Leanne gave a pretty in-depth report on that. Appreciate that. 15th was the LEPC meeting. Bob's probably reported on that. And then yesterday, the county bridge tour. At the end of the tour, we did tour some of the drainage issues out in that building, Marty, and we're going to probably try and take another stab at, at getting some things cleaned out out there that are not necessarily on our property, but under the road. And there's some railroad right-of-way issues there for cleaning that out, so I think we'll, we'll all have some conversations with somebody I know to see if we can't get the city to, to move forward to help us with that drainage issue out there. So that's something I think we need to look at. It's not, obviously, it affects your, your evidence locker, but it affects some other areas out there, too. So it's something we, hopefully, we can get a study done of some sort and get it corrected. And that completes my report.
I just had one quick thing with the, the Sioux Valley Commissioners meeting tomorrow. I misspoke. It was not Commissioner Pierce. It was the, the four of you. I, you are the one that's not attending, going out to Pier in September. So it's the other four that I did RSVP for, and not Commissioner Pierce. I thought that I, yes. I had the two meetings where I had four going and one not, and I had those mixed around, so. So all four of you can feel free to attend tomorrow.
So I have to go, okay? Alright. Item 12 is an executive session in accordance with South Dakota Cloudified Law 1-25-2, parentheses, for for contract negotiations. Is there a motion to move into executive session?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries. We will take a five-minute recess and reconvene in the executive session room.